Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order a meeting of the Licensing Board of the City of West Bend. It is Monday, July 21st. Alderman Butchlick, Alderman Zingshaim, and myself make up the Licensing Board, so we have a full quorum here tonight. Our first item of business is the regular meeting minutes from July 7th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We've got four items on the agenda tonight. The first is a new Class B Combo Reserve Liquor License for Beeks Joint. This is the former location of Hair of the Dog up in Barton. So, nice to see them applying for a license under a new ownership and hopefully opening soon.
Motion to approve.
A second.
Thank you, Zingshaim and Butchlick. Chief and Clerk, is everything in order with this license and all the license on the agenda?
Everything is in order, yes.
Very good.
Correct, thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next is a new amusement device license, 2526.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Butchlick and Zingshaim. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. The next is a massage establishment license renewal for BJ and Company, 2526.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Zingshaim and Butchlick. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And the last one is GPM Southeast, our store's change of agent.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick, Alderman Zingshaim. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, and the Licensing Board is adjourned.
I call to order a meeting of the Finance Committee. We have two agenda items this evening. The first is the approval of the regular meeting minutes from July 7th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Butchlick and Zingshaim. Any corrections, additions, deletions? There being none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then motion carries. The second is a resolution number 24 to accept donations to the Fire Department. Welcome, Chief.
Hello, thank you. Today I have a resolution to consider to accept a donation for the smoke detector and carbon dioxide detector program as a generous donation from Susan Ellison of $50. So, I would present that for your consideration.
Thank you, Alderman Schmidt and Alderman Sparts. Any comments, questions? Thank you very much for that donation. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. There being no business, further business before the Finance Committee adjourned his chair.
It is Monday, July 21st, 2025, and this is a meeting of the Common Council of the City of West Bend. More than 24 hours in advance of tonight's meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of the meeting was posted in accordance to Wisconsin state statutes. Clerk, can you confirm this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. I invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. We recognize a full quorum of our council here with us tonight. Our first item of business is approval of our minutes from our Common Council regular meeting held on July 7th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Schmidt and Alderman Zingshaim. Any comments, questions, corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. If it's okay with the council, I would like to move our presentation of our tax increment districts after our consent and action items tonight. That's okay with everyone? Okay, very good. We'll move on to our consent agenda. We just did licensing, four licenses in our Licensing Board and the resolution to accept the donation to the Fire Department. I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderwoman Sizer. Any comments, questions on the consent agenda? Yes.
Didn't they have an issue, some kind of inspection issue down at Beeks Joint?
Yeah, Chief, do you want to speak on that?
That's correct. They did have some fire code violations. To my knowledge, they've not been successively corrected yet. Obviously, that'll have to take place before they can open a new business.
Okay, that was where I was going with that.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anything else, Chief?
Yep, I'll just say that inspection is on top of the issue. It's mainly due to the vent hood and some of the items in their kitchen. They're working hard. We've got, working very closely with the building owner, the business owner, rather, and they are projecting they'll be able to navigate all those, but inspection's definitely on top of it.
Good question.
Good question.
Just add something real quick, too. It's a good point that the fire codes and the specific fire codes in question were related to cooking equipment, the operation of cooking equipment, so there's no ongoing fire hazard if they're not operating the kitchen. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, our first item of business tonight is a presentation on the potential sale of Fire Station Number One. We're welcomed tonight by Jim Schlammer and Kevin Steiner, Chris Swigert, from the Midwest Firefighters Museum. Did I say that right? Midwest Museum of Firefighting. And I'll invite you to the podium and for your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. As the mayor said, I'm Jim Schlammer. I'm acting as President of Midwest Museum of Firefighting. And Kevin Steiner, co-founder of the museum and board member, and also Vice President of the Museum of, the Midwest Museum of Firefighting. Thank you. We got it going here. As many of you know, because we've tried to address and discuss this in advance, the museum had its foundation on the fact that a tremendous collection of firefighting apparatus has been collected over a lifetime by the Franz family and is held by the Venerable Fire Collection located in the town of Polk right now. And we're fortunate that representing the Venerable Fire Collection here tonight are Warren Franz, Mary Franz, and Owen Franz, as well as another organizer, well, as the mayor mentioned, Chris Swigert is the Secretary Treasurer of the organization. And another organizer of the organization and someone who's very active in the fundraising that we're doing is former Senator Mary Panzer, who's also here tonight with us. This collection deserves a tremendous home where as many people as possible can view the collection, can appreciate the history behind the fire service, and hopefully instill enthusiasm for young firefighters of the future, as well as recognizing and honoring the fire service and all of the people that have built that over the years. It's fitting that one of West Bend's major employers is in the fire protection business. So, Kevin, maybe you want to comment on that?
Thank you, Jim. Thanks for the invitation tonight. I think you all know that in 1894, West Bend Mutual Insurance Company, Fire Insurance Company, at that point was founded and founded because there was the great fire in West Bend. The business owners were unhappy with the East Coast insurance companies and the service they were getting. And so, the local business, at that point probably was men, businessmen, got together and started a West Bend Fire Insurance Company, a mutual insurance company. Obviously, we still exist today. We're still a mutual insurance company. And it's a great forum for insurance company because we've been able to be, you know, here for 130 years and plan to be here for another 130 years. Jim actually is on our board as our lead director. I'm also on the board as retired CEO. And so, when we had this opportunity, it was only natural that West Bend Mutual would get involved. And I'm so happy to say that with Jim's idea, we jumped on board quick. And it's certainly been a very exciting project.
So, it, over the course of about the last year or so, this group of us that are interested in seeing this collection be preserved and presented here in West Bend, worked with the members of the Venerable Fire Collection, and we have contracted for them to make this generous donation for a new museum to be located in West Bend. It's important that we get the momentum going before we go public with this, and I'm happy to say we have a commitment, commitments plural, for over $2 million in cash donations. We have more to raise, and with this evening's presentation, we're really kicking off that formal fundraising activity for the museum. And given the fact that there's a new fire station that's going to be built and there's one that needs to be repurposed, we can't think of a better location to serve the community, the state, the region than to locate in the Fire Station One right downtown where we will draw many tourists to the city. And so, if we're able to receive your approval to have the fire station transferred to the Midwest Museum of Firefighting, it will allow us to really go out in earnest on our fundraising because we now have a location. We can tell people where it's going to be, what it's going to look like. What you see in front of you are photographs of some of the pieces in the collection. There are many pieces in the collection. They date to hand-pulled and horse-drawn apparatus to more present day. They include some amazing historical pieces. They also include, as the one photograph shows, an actual call box station where the old call boxes that people could pull and notify a firehouse of a fire would then go to a ticker tape, and it's an operating system that's in place, and we plan to have it in place. The museum will have interactive educational components to it. It really will be something to honor the past and also train and educate and instill enthusiasm going forward. You also see, and I'm not sure where it is, Kevin, you want to just look at the rendering of what the building might look like? That one. That isn't necessarily how the finished product will look. We haven't hired an architect yet to really look at our options, but that is one example of how this fire station can be repurposed to be a terrific tourist destination and cultural attraction in the city of West Bend. So, with that, I guess I'd open it up to any questions?
Any questions from the council? Mary Beth?
How large is the collection and how much room do you have for the collection? Can it all be out at the same time or?
Actually, the current space in Warren or Mary, help me, I think it's 10,000 square, 10,000 square feet is the, the collection is currently housed in 10,000. The fire station is 25,000 square feet. So, we have room to add to it, and that's also our intention. But remember, the upper floor probably can't hold a fire truck, but it may be able to hold some of the lighter apparatus, but it also serves as where the interactive and the educational displays can be located as well.
Thank you.
You mentioned going public with this, and tonight's the night. You're literally going public with it right now. It's very exciting to see the pictures and knowing that this is still a good year away because, well, probably a year and a half to two years away before you can actually move in. Is, are members of our community able to go visit the museum where it is today? Is it open to the public to go view it?
It is open on the first Sunday of each month, May through October.
Second Sunday.
Excuse me. Second, second Sunday of each month, May through October. And so, it's available. In addition, they schedule, for example, school visits and other groups on other days, but the second Sunday, May through October. So, there's still a couple of Sundays left this season where people can go visit. Thank you, Mayor.
Do you, excuse me, do you anticipate that you rent out this facility for special events or things of that nature?
We don't know yet because we don't know how it will lay out and how it will be designed in the space. We had to get to this point, but we would certainly hope that there will be some opportunity because that kind of coincides with getting greater attendance. The way the Museum of Wisconsin Art does and the Historic Museum in West Bend, we'd like to be able to facilitate particularly groups that are related to the fire service who want to meet there.
I realize you might not be down the rabbit hole yet enough on this, but I'm, do you anticipate your proposal is going to also inquire or require more parking than it would be in the regular space?
In looking at the site plan or the site right now, there's room to expand parking on the site. And of course, that surface area that is to the south of the lower level isn't really purpose as parking today, but it can be expanded. So, I think there's a reasonable expectation that we can accommodate the parking, and we may have to rely on street parking for special occasions as well.
We know the funding, we know the building needs help, HVAC and so forth. What is your funding goal? How much do you need, do you think?
We feel that we're at a minimum of $4 million in addition to the collection and the building. So, we're about halfway there on the cash goal at a minimum, and we hope to take it to a larger number than that.
Could I add that that also includes our plan to be a secret endowment so we can help from an operational standpoint, so we can drop in on endowment to help with the operations side, too. So, it would be part of our funding initiative.
Brett, did you have another question?
Yeah, just real briefly. So, I noticed here the Midwest Museum, and so I guess I'm wondering how extensive other states and things like that, the reach is, and if there's, if you anticipate that that reach might actually bring in sort of tourism from a wider space, if that makes sense?
That is correct. There are several museums that recognize the fire service. New York has a one, for example. Perhaps one of the foremost museums is the Hall of Flame in Phoenix, started, interestingly enough, by a Wisconsin family that moved their collection to Phoenix a number of years ago. There are other collections around the country, but we certainly view this as something that will draw from a wide area without being, I guess, too presumptuous that we could call it the National Museum, but the Midwest is our objective.
Having seen the museum in Slinger and to be able to bring this out to West Bend and expand it, it's awesome. I know we tried this several years ago. I also put out a shout-out for Keith. He did a heck of a job. I know his vehicles are meticulous. These are some of the best in the country and second to none, so. And the use of the building, if it looks like that, I'm happy.
Do you anticipate that you're going to rotate pieces in and out?
Well, we certainly hope to expand the collection beyond the venerable collection, which is one of the foremost collections in the country, but we hope to be able to add other pieces. We may try to have, these pieces were really museum pieces, but we're hoping that we can also add pieces that can do outreach and be taken out to, to reach out and expand the, sort of the draw to the museum. So, this is the start.
No question, but I just want to thank you for your vision in what we can do with this collection in this community in support of all those men and women who have served in the fire service over generations, right? And to the family who's making this very generous donation of the collection to this, thank you very much, because I think this becomes another centerpiece and focal point in our downtown area to draw people into our downtown, to draw people into the community, which is phenomenal. So, thank you for not only your vision, but the time and effort that you and your team have put in over the course of the last year plus to get you to this point, and excited about what the future holds. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
I'll echo what John and Jim have been saying about the collection. I saw it last summer, last fall, maybe, with Mary, and my only disappointment was that I didn't have my family with me to see it. It is quite unbelievable. And to have this collection in downtown West Bend would draw, like Jim and Kevin have been saying, from around, around the area, around the state, and around the nation, it would be a treasure to have on display seven days a week, hopefully.
Hopefully.
And right in our downtown. It's an absolutely gorgeous collection. We would be thrilled to have it. Yeah, John?
Just a question, too, on the museum. What kind of staffing thoughts are you thinking as far as positions, that kind of stuff? I mean, something like this is going to take maintenance. It does take volunteers. I know it's volunteers now, and those guys do a heck of a job, a lot of retired firefighters and mechanics and people that just love old vehicles, too, so.
It'll be a combination. We, one of the reasons, as Kevin said, we're looking to fund an endowment is that typically a museum like this doesn't support staff and all the required maintenance just on revenue that it generates. So, that's an important part of what we're doing. But there will be a combination of paid staff that not only is involved with the maintenance, but also involved, most importantly, I think, with the programming and the planning and the marketing of the museum. And then, we don't expect, we expect that there will be a large number of people who volunteer, who know the fire service already and want to contribute by being docents at the museum. So, it'll be a combination of both volunteer and paid staffers.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
If there are no more questions, we're going to move into a potential action item on this, which is resolution number 23 regarding the sale of real estate, Fire Station Number One. On page 104 of your packet is the resolution. Because Ian is not here tonight, I'm going to quickly go through the resolution with you. The city owns the real estate which currently houses Fire Station Number One. The property is in a state of requiring significant renovation in due part, in part due to its specific limited use as a fire station and the difficulty to redevelop due to high costs of demolition. The property currently has a land use classification of governmental and institutional and a zoning classification of institutional, allowing for the redevelopment into an institutional use such as a museum. The Midwest Museum of Firefighting, nonprofit, has approached the city with interest to purchase the museum. This would be, purchase the station to turn into a museum. This would be an excellent cornerstone development in the downtown area to draw tourism and to continue the ongoing revitalization of the downtown area. Use of the current Fire Station Number One as the site for the Midwest Museum of Firefighting would preserve the legacy and history of the dedicated individuals who have served as firefighters in the city of West Bend since the foundation of the department in 1918. Therefore, this resolution would resolve that the city shall enter and offer to, enter into an offer to purchase, to sell the property to the Midwest Museum of Firefighting for the price of $1. This would truly be a public-private partnership. The museum of fire, Midwest Museum of Firefighting would have due diligence period of time to make sure that they can do what they want to do with the building, inspect the building and so forth. Upon approval tonight, we would give the authority to the city administrator or interim city administrator to execute the offer to purchase on behalf of the city. The museum would apply, would need to apply for site plan and architectural review by the City of West Bend Planning Commission, which I believe then typically comes to the council. Is that correct? Not necessarily?
No.
Okay. Couple other things, I guess I would just add is another anchor like this, if you think of our anchors downtown as like Moa, the Tower Heritage Center, the library, this would be another one of those anchors in downtown. Attraction is, attraction and tourism is what those anchors typically do. It's consistent with our downtown master plan of revitalization of downtown and adding to the quality of life of our residents. And I would also add that if it is not approved here in West Bend, the museum will certainly go somewhere else. Any questions on the resolution? Or we can entertain a motion and then have discussion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Thank you, Sparts and Zingshaim. So, we've got a motion to approve on the floor on resolution number 23. Any comments, questions, discussion?
I think this is a great opportunity.
Mm-hmm. Great. Because this is a financial type decision that needs to be made, I will take a roll call vote.
One other comment.
Yep, sure.
1918 was when the department was formed into its current format. Prior to that, they had separate fire companies. They were still the Westman Fire Department, but they had separate fire companies, so I know you caught that right away, so.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Alderman Sparts.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Engelking.
Aye.
Alderman Sternig.
Aye.
Alderwoman Sizer. Alderman Butchlick.
Aye.
Alderman Zingshaim.
Aye.
Alderman Berquist.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you very, very much for being here tonight. This is very exciting.
We look forward to it.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to our agenda tonight. I have a mayoral appointment for the Redevelopment Authority with the recommendation of Steve Eichsted.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sternig and Alderman Zingshaim. John, I'm going to ask you a question about the Redevelopment Authority as you're coming up. This is an authority that has not met in maybe a decade.
2018, I think, was the last.
2018.
Not quite a decade.
And I remember you telling me that you would like to have them meet in August to kind of go through what exactly they do and maybe have a meeting in the future. Can you kind of tell us what they do?
Sure. So, the Redevelopment Authority, how do I describe it? They're set up basically to operate as, to assist the city in redevelopment, I guess. So, if the city for some reason needed to acquire property, they are able to acquire property in certain ways. There is a relationship between city councils, so they can't go off on their own, but it basically protects the municipality. So, for instance, if we had a piece of property that was contaminated or something like that, and we needed to acquire that property in order to secure like DNR funds or other types of grants to get a piece of property cleaned up, that's where the Redevelopment Authority would step in. And they would actually, instead of having the property, for instance, in the name of the city, it would be in the name of the Redevelopment Authority. They, under state statutes, have, you know, a certain amount of things they can and they can't do. They can actually do redevelopment plans for whole areas or for individual properties and things like that. They're sort of like a planning commission, but they also have some other abilities that they can do. So, we've used them in the past. We haven't used them for quite a while as a board. We just had one missing spot on the position, so I asked the mayor if he could appoint someone because I think we have some, a potential opportunity coming up where we might need the Redevelopment Authority. And so, I just thought we should probably make sure they're a full board, and if we need to meet, then we have the whole group together.
Great.
Yep.
Thank you. Steve Eichsted is a bankruptcy attorney. He works for Dahlberg O'Meara Law Offices. He offices out of Jackson and West Bend. He's a 20-ish year resident of the city. Any other comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. John, you've got the next two items tonight. They're both on TIF number 17, and they are both two different redevelopment agreements, or redevelopment, developers' agreements.
We do have two development agreements this evening. So, the first one, item 10, it's a development agreement between the city and Continental Properties over in Tax Increment District Number 17. It's essentially an agreement for them to put sewer and water into the property. So, they're going to come essentially connect by Continental Drive, come over, it'll drop down to 18th over to where the new subdivision is. It's a pretty simple agreement. It's modeled off of our standard subdivision agreement. It basically says they're going to put the sewer and the water into city specs. They'll be inspected. They'll do it in a workmanlike manner, those types of things.
Great, thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick. Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alder Roman Sizer. Any comments, questions, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And John, the next one.
Item number 11 is the agreement for Continental Properties. This is for tax increment district number 17. It's essentially a financial agreement that basically indicates that Continental Properties is going to put that water and sewer line in. It's basically a PEGO-type agreement where they're going to upfront the money, put the pipes in, and then over time, they will get the money back for the cost of what that infrastructure is that will be turned over to the city. I'll mention originally in the tax increment financing district, we did a budget for road infrastructure, sewer and water. At this point, it's just the sewer and water, and I believe it will probably just stay at that point. I don't perceive the roads, so that dollar amount is much smaller than originally anticipated.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Sternig. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick. Any questions, comments, discussion?
Yeah, where does that reimbursement come from, John?
It comes from the, the reimbursement comes from the tax increment financing district. So basically, the increment that's created by the new development within that district, that goes to pay back the developer from that perspective. So that base value, and in the next item, I'll explain a little bit more, but that base value continues to go to the school, the school districts, the city. It's the increment amount that would go to pay off, off that portion. And I believe it's, I can look it up. It's not a huge dollar amount. It's, I think it's, trying to think now. Right around a million dollars, I think.
Good question. Any other questions?
John, is there going to be any kind of consideration for road work coming up? Or will that be another action based on the TID? Because isn't road work on 18th going to be included in that?
Yeah, that would be a separate item. So with the tax increment financing district, for Continental Properties, there is internal road network and sewer and water. It's just going to be the sewer and water now. But there was a separate item for infrastructure on 18th. Right now, our tentative plans are for design of that, for 18th to happen in late '25, '26. And then we would probably go out to bid fall of '26. It would probably be a summer of '27 project at the earliest. At least that's the tentative schedule Max and I've talked about.
Okay.
It could be pushed out. It's a little flexible, but.
Okay.
Could happen quicker if needed.
All right. We do have a motion and a second, correct? Any other questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. John, you've got our presentation tonight, and this is a, kind of an overview of the 2024 tax incremental districts and kind of performance of the districts from last year.
I do, and I don't know.
He's going to put them on the screen.
I've plugged my computer in. Give me a second. I don't know if I plugged it in the right way. Can you see something on your screen?
Nope. Here it comes.
Plug in.
Thanks for coming. See ya.
This doesn't do anything, huh? Okay. Oh, which one is it? Okay. So while we're waiting for that to get up on the screen, I'm just going to, in this presentation, just as a preview, I'm going to go through a few key items about tax increment financing districts. And then I'll talk a little bit about each district in brief for each of them, so.
Said go back to the lectern?
Yeah, but I think I'm at the lectern. Oh, plug, take this out, plug this back in.
Yeah.
There we go. My screen's doing something, so.
There we go.
Hey, we're great. All right. So, and I kind of put this together a little bit so that the audience at home, if they don't know what a tax increment financing district is, there's a little bit of information here for them. So key acronyms, TIF is the Tax Increment, Increment Financing Tool. TID is the Tax Increment District, so that's the actual physical boundary like on a map. I will mention, most people use TIF and TID interchangeably. Probably don't use them always grammatically correct as if you were to write them when they're speaking about them. It's a powerful economic development tool. It's one of the few economic development tools we have in the state of Wisconsin. It allows municipalities to capture that increment or property tax revenue from the growth in defined areas and use it to benefit that particular area. There is a BUT-4 test. This is stated through statutes and through the Department of Revenue's documents. The standard applies by the Joint Review Board. It's a key underpinning of a tax increment financing program. The BUT-4 is used to make sure that it, what is, as, what's proposed and what will occur is as it is proposed, it's within its timeframe and it's of the same value. So it essentially has some standards. Also, in addition to the BUT-4, independent third-party reviewers of developers' source, resources, their cash flows, those types of things also get reviewed. Often, it looks at properties that are challenging sites, sites that may not be able to be developed or redeveloped without some sort of assistance and projects that often need extensive public infrastructure cost or areas of a community that are lacking economic development from the private sector. This is a little diagram to try to describe the building blocks of the TID cash flow. So if you look at this chart, the base property value, which is in blue on the bottom, that rectangle, that's the base property value. That continues to go to all the jurisdictions. And then that purple increment, that increment area there, that's what's captured from the new development. And so that's the portion that pays off infrastructure, either that's borrowed from the city or maybe put in through a development incentive or that kind of thing. And then the value after termination of the district, so when that district closes, then all of that increment goes back to all of the jurisdictions. So a school district would see a significant increase in, in value if, after the point, that would be different than if it hadn't occurred. So just to kind of look at this, it's, again, it's kind of a zoomed-in version of that chart. All taxing jurisdictions still get that base property value. So here's kind of a look. And so if you had that base property value, they would still all be getting that $20, that total there of each of their portions. This is a map of our tax increment districts in West Bend. You'll see, we have some that are very small, some that are very large. You'll see, this map is as of the first of the year. We did create a tax increment district number 17, which is a little bit off. No, it's just slightly on this map. So that is not depicted on here, and I guess that's a good point to let you know that everything in this presentation is as of the first of this year from that perspective. This is a little summary of the districts. So we have closed. So you'll see here, we don't start off with district number one. One and two have closed a number of years ago. So we have three, four, all the way up through 16. And district number seven, I believe it is, that will probably close next year and will be before council for that closure and discussion probably next spring. So here, I'm just going to go through really quick tax increment districts. So this is number three. This is the Wingate area over by the airport. It's a 27-year district. It was a distressed district, so 10 years were added to it. Some of the projects that are going to be happening here is a new building and maintenance yard for We Energies, and the National Guard is looking at doing some modifications to their site in the property that they own. TID number four is the West Bend Corporate Center. This has been developed, is over by Walmart and the shops over there. We just saw sort of one of the larger tenants bases this last year get filled up with, by Vortex Pickleball. And it is a donor TID to five and nine. So it's probably a good point to let you know that we have two districts. They don't perform as well, but you can have donor districts. And the better performing districts are able to contribute to those districts to keep them all kind of doing well. TID number five, which is the Wisconsin Street Depot area of, towards in the downtown area. It did have an amendment in 2011. As I mentioned, it is receiving funds from four and six. It does have an increment value of about $17 million. Number six is over by Menards and Paradise area. It was created back in '98. It does do some increment sharing also with, as the other district, five and nine. And so it has an increment value of $66 million. It has, we haven't seen any brand-new buildings in that district. It's pretty full, but the buildings that are there, I think we counted about six that have either had remodelings or additions or other things. So the value in that district is staying high. TID number seven, this is the East Industrial Park. It was created in '99. It has a 23-year lifespan. It is past its expenditure period, and I'll kind of mention, there's a period in each district where you can actually spend money, and then there's a point where you can't spend any more money. And the point of that tool is that it allows for that increment to pay off all of those debts. And so they've had, also had some various expansions. Number nine is Veterans Ave and Auxiliary Court. This particular district does receive increment from TIDS four and six. It has a little smaller value at $4 million. The Riverwalk was part of the completion over here in nine. Number 10 is the River Shores area. It was a blight elimination TID. So I probably could mention, now we have different types of categories of TIDS. There's industrial TIDS, there's blight elimination, there's mixed use. So you can have different types of TIDS, and there's some different rules that come along with the type of TID that's chosen when they're created. You can't change the type of TID once it's created. It stays that way for its life. This district has 10 years revenue collection, and it's about $63 million of value. And TID, and I should mention, these value numbers are after, there's the total value and then subtract the original increment. So this is sort of that balance of, of actually the incremental value. The actual value of the properties is higher than the numbers projected or indicated in the presentation. TID number 11 is the River Road Industrial Park. This district has also had some various expansions over the last year in '24. TID number 12 is the GEL Company Rehabilitation District. This district didn't see a lot of activity for some time, but with the Emory or F Street Project, which should be fully constructed and have full occupancy permits we're anticipating in October, it should have some, we'll see a full, so it's, right now it's at $72 million. When we get to 1-1 of '26, we're going to see that full increment value of that particular development. So I would expect this number to be significantly higher come next year. So this district should be performing in the years to come in a very positive way. And we continue to work on some environmental closure approvals with the DNR, and those are always a little bit of a lengthier process. TID number 13, former Amity Project. This has about a $6 million value. TID number 14, this is the West Bend Manufacturing Center. This is where Milwaukee Tools and Kettle Moraine Metals is located. It has an existing increment value of about $10 million, and it has, the occupancy for Kettle Moraine happened, I think, February of this year. TID number 15, it's HKS Downtown Riverfront. This project is at $32 million. It's higher than originally anticipated. They are at pretty much full occupancy in the 90 percentiles this past year. And the projects for 2024 was the completion of Riverwalk and Main Street. So this particular TID is doing quite well. TID number 16 is the East Side Redevelopment Plan. This would be maybe this, what you might refer to as Sand Drive. We have the construction of the Eyes of On Village. 54 units are underway. And the construction of Charter Senior Living at 115 units is almost complete. They should be able to see residents here this fall. And then we have future agreements for Decorah Flats in the Iron Horse, which is closer towards the intersection of Indiana and Decorah. Just wanted to, and I'm going to be completely transparent here. These are three slides that I borrowed from the, from the Ellers' presentation last August. Instead of reconstructing them, I actually thought they, they did a pretty good example of letting you know kind of the history of the available levies. So in 2021, there was a net new construction of .823%. That has a levy allowance of 173. And you can just see through this presentation in 2022, those numbers of net new construction went up a little bit more. And in 2024, it was 1.24. So the city levy components, there's the operating and the general fund, capital projects and the debt service are all things that I'm sure you're familiar with. And then as of one, or eight, one of '24, the city's new construction is 1.24, which equates to about $275,591 of allowable levy increase. The city does not use the full levy amount adjusted for debt. As such, the city currently has approximately 2.4 of unused levy capacity. That would have been as of August of last year. That new net construction calculation will be recalculated by the DOR this August. So we'll probably have an estimate around the first to fifth of August, and then they usually solidify that number around the 15th of August. So we'll have some new numbers for you in about a month. Any questions?
Thank you for the overview, and this was something, obviously, at the last meeting that we had asked John to come do this. There's a, there's a packet about this big upstairs that goes into more in-depth on the TIDS, the different districts and kind of the history and expenditures and so forth. So if you're interested in that, it's available. John can certainly walk you through that. We have some TID districts that are doing very, very well, that are actually financially supporting other districts that aren't doing so well. They aren't, the districts that aren't doing well, it's, could be for a number of different reasons. TID number seven, for instance, is where MOA is. And there was a very conscious decision by the council years and years ago that they weren't going to develop in the area that is now filled with Aspen trees. The museum had been built. There were some ideas of, well, let's develop just to the south of there or to the north of the Hub Coffee Shop. And the council decided, we're not going to do that. We're going to, we're going to make that part of MOA, make it a beautiful, you know, area for our community and for the museum and so forth. And obviously, when you do that, you're putting in trees, it's not as valuable as putting in a, an apartment building or condos or whatever. So that was a very conscious decision that was made, knowing that the TID is not going to be successful. But we have other TIDS that are very successful, like Walmart, Menards and so forth, that can help contribute to the, financially to that distressed TID. So a distressed TID is not necessarily a bad thing, as long as you, the numbers work, which in our case, the numbers are working quite well. Another one I'd point out is the district apartments, as John mentioned, are almost completely full. I want to say when the developers' agreement came around on that, the guaranteed value was something around $23 or $24 million, and it's now valued at over $35 million. So that, for instance, is, is, is doing quite well. It's exceeding expectations and, I don't know, is there anything else you'd like to add as on my train of thought there?
No, I mean, I think for the most part, all of our districts are doing, you know, well. We have the donor ones, but they're also. well. We have the donor ones, but they're also doing well themselves with the donations from the other districts, you know, developments. All the districts have increased in value, some a little bit more than others. Some of our older industrial areas that were created as tax increment financing districts that are from the late 90s, I guess I would probably say their values have kind of stabilized. They're doing what they're, you know, is they're expected for the age of the buildings and that kind of thing. And we're seeing that, a little bit of reinvestment. So when someone has an older industrial building in those districts and they remodel an office or something, that, it does add a little bit of increment from that perspective. And yeah, and if, again, as the mayor mentioned, if anybody's interested, there's kind of a full binder book that I'd be glad to either get to you, or you can look at, if you really wanna look at lots of flow charts of numbers and those types of things, or if you just have more questions about how does, how do TIFs work, if you have more in-depth questions about the law or something like that, I'd be glad to, to sit down with you and talk about them.
Just one question, John. You had mentioned that some of them may be close to closing out, and at that point, they now become part of the tax rule again. Do you have a sense of what those are, or maybe, or approximate timing for what those are gonna look like?
Yeah, so the one district over by Saragraft, just north of Washington Street, that's the one that's planned to be closed out. We could actually close it out probably this fall if we wanted to. I've talked to finance. It's almost paid itself off. So if we were to close it out this fall, we'd be short a little bit. If we wait until next spring, they'll just, we'll have paid it, they'll have literally gotten to zero, and there'll be a little extra that we don't even need. So from that perspective, there is a decision-making process that happens through that process with council, would be, there is, you could extend it for one more year to assist with, from a housing perspective. So that district won't create a lot of extra money, but it would be enough to maybe assist a project that might be coordinated with like a next-gen project with the county or something like that. Some communities choose just to close them off at that point. There's other communities throughout our area that actually have created programs, and they, they take that, they use that extra dollar amount to help with sort of the housing issues that the communities have, which a lot of communities at this point are, you know, a lot of, housing is really expensive from that perspective. So there's a lot of different examples out there, from programs where people can apply for grants that help rehab, to actually helping brand-new, new construction, that kind of thing. So there's a big range of opportunities there potentially.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Good question. Any other questions? John, thank you very much for going through that tonight. We'll move on to our reports tonight. Parks and Rec Commission meeting from July 17.
Okay, the meeting was held at 4 o'clock at City Hall. They had a virtual conference link available, so we did have a quorum with two members joining us online. New business. Ryan discussed the potential for the formation of a competition dance, dance team. Team members would have 25 three-hour sessions, costumes, and three competitions, competitions in Milwaukee, Wisconsin Dells, and Green Bay. There would be two age groups, and the tryouts would be probably in August with competitions in April. This is something we've had in the past, and there has been interest expressed again. So they're trying to put a team together again. On August 1st, there will be a special event for an adult night at the Aqua Park from 5 until 7. Tickets are limited to 140 participants, so purchase them online ahead of time if you're interested. Rules and regulations were reviewed, and it sounds like a fun event. Reports, the quarterly trust report for the second quarter was presented. There was discussion on the park fee acquisition, and it was mentioned that since the last evaluation was 10 years ago, it's time for a comprehensive overview again. With the potential at Parkside Oak and the new TID on the southwest end of town, the city is due for an updated comprehensive park plan. The Aqua Park is doing very well and proving to be very popular. We are seeking design proposals for the skate park. A number of parties are interested, and proposals are due in August. Construction at Wingate Park is scheduled for August 9. Volunteers will assemble at 8:00 a.m. Concrete footings, asphalt, and mulch will follow in the next week or so. There will be two new structures, and some existing structures will be refurbished with new paint. The LLC Nature Playground Landscapes is currently performing landscape installation. The West Bend Sunrise Rotarians have scheduled a planting day for Saturday, July 26, and there are plans to convert an adjacent shed to an open-air shelter. This is not a complete list, but it demonstrates a very busy summer for our Park, Rec, and Forestry Department. Mike Yent did thank the Police Department and the many volunteers for sharing all their time and talent. Their help is certainly appreciated, not only by the Park and Rec team, but by all the residents and all the visitors to our city. So thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
Just a question. I don't know if you know this or not. Do you know how we're doing on ticket sales for, for the water park? We're halfway through, and I'm wondering if we're, we're on schedule, do they?
Ryan did not share numbers, no, and nobody asked either, so we can find out. He just said it's very popular and going very well, so I don't know if you know. Do you have any ideas?
Yep, I, I do not know specific numbers. I know that we've by far surpassed any year of revenue up to, up to this point. We exceeded last year's revenue, I think, by mid-June, maybe even early June, so it's doing very well, I'm sure.
Yeah, I was just wondering if we're on track and?
Oh, I'm, I think we're exceeding all the expectations. I'm sure Director Yent should be happy to fill us in on the next role.
Hot weather helps.
Yeah.
It's very successful.
Chief?
Yep, I'll just keep on my roll, a risk of being accused of having a bromance with Director Yent. I'll thank his crew, Dirty Ninja Mud Run this past Saturday, falling right on the heels of the 4th of July and all the hard work that Mike and Dan and Ryan and their entire team at Park, Rec, and Forestry. 2,382 registrants participated in the run, so at least double that. Someone had at least a parent, usually two grandparents if you're in the park, siblings. So we had about 8,000, anywhere up to 8,000 to 10,000 people in Regner Park last Saturday. Tremendous team effort between all of our departments, clearly led by Parks and Recs, but if you were there, you saw every member of city administration, certainly the Fire Department, Police Department, working collaboratively, DPW, everyone was there. Past members, community members, making sure that these kids created some, and families created some dirty, but fun and great memories. So another great piece of prideful moment for the city of West Bend. Just an assurance that your department head team's continuing to work hard on preparing the 2026 budget. Worked both through CIP and operating, moving forward, but also cognizant that we'll have a new leader for us coming in soon. So we're trying to work, be, make sure, that's a great opportunity for Jesse to learn about the city, learn about our team as he helps us to navigate that 2026 budget, so doing that smartly. And then just finally, John mentioned blight elimination in TID 10. Some pretty exciting forward news to continue our process on the Oak Street property. Rhett, you actually mentioned it, one of your young constituents mentioned the building on, on the Isavon, it's old, that's been in process for many years, moving forward. We've had all of it, the insides taken out, and now John and his team working hard with both the DNR and the county to move forward. Hopefully, we'll see, we will see continued action to keep moving forward and give that an area that will be developed soon. So pretty exciting stuff.
Hey, thanks, chief. Any questions? Any alderman reports tonight?
I just wanted to echo, my boys were at the Dirty Ninja Mud Run, and I don't think I've seen more people in the last three as, as were this year. It was great, it wasn't too hot and everything. Also, kudos to the, to those who cleaned it whole up, because it was really sloppy in particular areas. And same goes with the, the water park. I actually had a personal opportunity to go on there, and yeah, I, I haven't been there when it hasn't been filled and selling out all its tickets, so I think things going pretty great.
Anecdotally, to everybody who is involved in the cleanup after the Dirty Ninja Mud Run, I umpire at Regner Park on Sunday afternoons. You would have never known that anything happened in that park, much less there'd be 8,000 to 10,000 people, and all the equipment that was put back where it was the previous weekend, which will now be, I'm sure moved outside into storage again. So for everybody who was involved in, in that effort after the event, they did a tremendous job. Regarding attendance at the water park, interestingly enough, I was umpiring at the Little League Diamonds on Saturday, and one of the teams from out of town had planned to go there and were disappointed that it was sold out for the entire day. And the families decided, that's okay, we're still gonna go down to the park and just enjoy the beach. So I thought that was great, that this was a team from outside of about a 30 to 45-mile radius of West Bend who had planned that as an event following a Little League game here in town. So I thought that was awesome, too. And on that note, West Bend Little League is actually hosting the Wisconsin State Majors Tournament this week, Thursday through Sunday. So the majors tournament are gonna be the 12 Worlds. It's a state tournament that rolls up to the regionals, that rolls up to the Little League World Series in Williamsport, Pennsylvania, and can be seen on ESPN. So this is that, that next level of, of the tournament in West Bend. Little League is honored to host those games here at the Diamonds, Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday, and Sunday. So if you're looking for some enjoyable, really good Little League baseball, come down and check it out.
That's cool. Over here.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
I was just gonna reiterate the August 9th Wingate Park construction. Plan, plan your schedules, and I think it's 9 o'clock it starts. And I also want to say thanks for the German Fest the other night, or German night. It was, it was down for a quick meal and came in late. Being postponed tonight actually helped me out, because I was out of town Wednesday night, so. Thank you.
I was just wondering, is, is West Bend, city of West Bend represented down at the Washington County Fair this year? Do we know? Last year they were.
Yeah, unfortunately, we are not gonna be manning the.
Okay. Just, just curious.
Any other announcements? Seeing none, the only thing I have is that I have a meeting out of town for work on August 4. So John, if you're gonna be here, I'd like you to chair the council meeting. And I'll talk to Jaleen about, are you gonna be here next meeting, August 4? Okay. So if you have licensing board things, it sounds like you should still have a quorum on August 4. That's all I've got. Everybody good? We'll see you in August. Our meeting's adjourned. Thanks.